Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and members of council. Are there any disclosures of peculiary interest or general nature thereof? I see none, so then we'll move on to the approval of the council meetings looking for a mervin secundar for the minutes of the council meeting held June 26. Counselor Jacobs, Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion. All in favor. Carried. And is there any business arising out of those minutes? I see none, so we have two introductions to do this evening before we get into the real work. First of all, we'll start with Ms. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce Ed Posliff, who is a lawyer in our Legal and Legislative Services Department. Ed commenced his employment last week on July the 4th. Ed has a Master of Laws from Osgood Hall Law School. He is a sessional lecturer at the Faculty of Law at the University of Windsor. He is certified as a specialist in civil litigation by the Law Society of Upper Canada. Ed has also been a lawyer in private practice for over 30 years, practicing with a law firm, McPherson Prince and Geddes, and then Musso De Luca, McPherson Prince, in Windsor. In addition to acting as an agent for the Director of Public Prosecutions prosecuting offences under federal laws and his general civil litigation practice, he has acted on behalf of a local municipality for the last 17 years, providing legal advice to administration and council, and appearing before the Ontario Municipal Board, the Ontario Human Rights Tribunal, the Superior Court of Justice, and the Provincial Offences Court. Anyone who has spoken to me over the last few weeks knows how happy I am that Ed has joined us, so I would like to formally welcome him here and introduce Ed to you.
So on behalf of council, Ed, welcome. Thank you for joining us, and have we got some work for you. So, right. And our second introduction is going to be done by Ms. Truax.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Tonight, we have Madeline Gibson with us. She has been with us for just over a month. She is our junior planner. She comes to us, she's recently graduated with her master's. She has a special interest in low-impact design, so you will see her upstairs with us in the planning department. She'll be focusing on site plans primarily for this time, as well as the site plan process, applications, those things to really help us streamline that process, but she'll be getting her fingers into everything now that she's here.
Very good. And again, on behalf of council, Madeline, welcome, and have we got work for you. Good place for both of you to start. This is awesome. Well, let's get right into it. So we have a public meeting to start off, and Ms. Truax, you're taking us through that.
Thank you. This is the public meeting for a combined consent and zoning amendment application. It's for the residential lot at 429 Kent Road 1. This residential property is just under an acre in area. You can see that it's a residential lot. It's highlighted in red on the screen, and it's a long rectangular property that's projecting into a greenhouse farm at 433 Kent Road 1. This property currently contains only a single detached dwelling on that large piece of property. It is designated agricultural in the OP, and it is currently zoned A5. The property is in an area that's serviced by water and sanitary from CK. It's on Kent Road 1, which obviously is the boundary between the municipality of Leamington and the municipality of Chatham Kent. This area is quite a mishmash of everything going on here, lots of severed residential lots, a number of agricultural uses, including a mink farm, traditional row crop greenhouses. There's also fish processing, so there's a lot going on here. So what the application is looking to do is to add the rear portion of the residential lot back to, or sorry, into the greenhouse operation at 433 Kent Road 1. They're looking to add .04 acres from that residential lot to the greenhouse. The lot addition is being asked to increase the lot area of the greenhouse farm. We're going to eliminate that finger that juts into the greenhouse farm, and it will also eliminate an encroachment of an existing drainage swale between those two properties. So we do have a recent site plan application that has been submitted for the expansion of the greenhouse, and on that, it did show that the existing greenhouses are six feet from the property line of the residential lot. If the addition is approved, the rear lot line of the residential dwelling will still be 130 feet from the greenhouse as it exists now, so we felt that that was appropriate. Lot additions are permitted in the agricultural area under the PPS, as well as the county OP. The Leamington official plan also permits lot additions, subject to a few criteria. The first being that both the retained and residential lots will comply with the lot area and frontage zone provisions, that the severed lands will merge with the property at 433 Kent Road 1, and that we're not creating any new residential lots. Comments were received from both IRCA and the county. They had no concerns. Subject to receiving any comments this evening, administration is in a position to support the lot addition, subject to the standard conditions that are listed in Schedule A that are attached to the report, and one of those conditions are that we obtain a zoning amendment to change the severed lands from A5 to A2, which is just opposite to what we normally do. The retained residential parcel will be just under .6 of an acre, and it will comply with the A5 zone provisions. The severed portion, again, which is just .4 of an acre, will be added to the greenhouse farm. That greenhouse farm will then become 21.8 acres, and it will also comply with the A2 zone provisions. Just for council's information, the greenhouse farm did recently receive a minor variance for setbacks along the rear and the side yards of the property at 433. This severance has no impact on the side yards that are being created as a result of this. They also have a pending site plan application for Phase 2 that's going to add just over seven acres of greenhouse to the property, as well as a warehouse expansion. The lot addition is not currently shown on the site plan. Depending on the timing, the applicant will be required to amend Schedule C when they bring forward a next phase of development. So subject to receiving comments from council and the public, administration is in a position to state that this lot addition conforms to the land division and land use policies of our OP. It's consistent with the direction of the PPS, as well as the county OP, and it satisfies the criteria to amend the zoning bylaw. The recommendation to council this evening is that provisional consent of Consent Application B917 be supported, subject to the conditions listed in Schedule A, that Zoning Bylaw Amendment Application 148 to change the zone of the severed lands from A5 to A2 be approved, and that Amending Bylaw 4617 be forwarded to council for consideration during the regular public meeting this evening.
Thank you very much. Questions from council to Danielle? None? So this is a public meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to address council in regard to this application? If not, then I'll come back to council. Moved by Counsel Verbeke, supported by Counselor Jacobs. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. So we'll move on to reports of staff and delegation. The first report is one regarding a noise bylaw exemption request. Ms. Horton?
Thank you. The municipality received a request from the owner of 1529 Deer Run Road for an exemption from the municipality's noise bylaw in respect of a wedding reception to be held at that location on Saturday, August 19, 2017. You do have an aerial map indicating the location of the property. The reason is for permission to have recorded music playing in a tent during the wedding reception for approximately 225 guests. Just for council's information, the applicants will also be submitting an application for a special event in order to address other aspects of the event, such as parking and any other potential neighborhood impacts. The application did include the request for the exemption until 2:00 a.m. on Sunday, August 20. However, the recommendation, as you will note, is that the exemption be granted only until 1:00 a.m. The applicants have advised administration that they have contacted the neighbors within close proximity to notify them of this request, and at the time of the writing of the report, we have not had any concerns expressed. Of course, the OPP would be notified, of course, in the event that council does approve the exemption. There is no financial impact upon the municipality if granting the exemption, so the recommendation is that the exemption be granted between the hours of 3:00 p.m. to midnight on Saturday the 19th, and from 12:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. on Sunday the 20th for a wedding reception at 1529 Deer Run Road. And I do believe that the applicants were in the audience, but perhaps, yes, okay, thank you. The applicant is here in the event there's any questions.
Okay. Questions from council? It's just behind my house. I should be able to walk across. Counselor Jacobs?
I'll make a motion to approve till 1:00 a.m.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Wilkinson. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. Move on to the next report is one regarding a lot control exemption, and Ms. Truax?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, members of council. Administration has received a request to exempt the lots within Phase 2 of the Destiny Estates Plan of Subdivision from the provisions of part lot control. Under the Planning Act, there are really only three ways to legally create parcels of land. That's through an approved plan of subdivision, an approved consent by the Committee of Adjustment, or by way of an exemption to the part lot control. This request is dealing with the third method, and we typically see this used when we're establishing lot lines between the common walls on townhouses or semi-detached units that are in an approved plan of subdivision. A part lot control exemption allows the owner to register the deeds for the individual units. This happens only first when a bylaw is adopted by council, then approved by the approval authority, which in our case is the County of Essex. That approved bylaw is registered on the title for the lots. The part lot control exemption bylaw specifically lays out what lots the exemption applies to, that the municipality is required to review the draft reference plans, and when the exemption will expire. So Destiny Estates has applied for an exemption for lots 4 to 12 on 12M 616. Those are the lots shown highlighted in red on the screen. These are lots on the east side of Destiny Drive. The exemption, if approved, will allow the owner to construct 18 semi-detached units in accordance with the lot layout that was approved as part of their subdivision agreement. The agreement and the plan of subdivision allow for the creation of 24 semi-detached units within Phase 2. We've also received consent applications to create the lots on 1 through 3, again, through the consent process, and it's my understanding that that's in order to meet timing issues related to pending sales. Administration has reviewed the request, and it is in a position to support the exemption from part lot control provisions of the Planning Act for the reasons provided within the report. In particular, these lands are fully serviced, the services and the roads have been installed. There is a development agreement in place, which acknowledges that these lots were going to be part of semi-detached units. There is no public requirement, public notice requirements, or appeal opportunities for this type of approval. The bylaw before council will expire in 2020. This timeline will ensure that the units can be constructed and that separate deeds be registered for each of those units. However, the owner can apply to extend the timeline for that exemption, as long as that extension comes in before the original bylaw expires. Pending any questions from council, the recommendation is that bylaw 4717 be approved to exempt lots 4 through 12 on Plan 616, and that administration be directed to forward the bylaw and supporting documentation to the County of Essex for final approval. I do note that Ms. Suzanne Bolser is present this evening on behalf of the owner, Larry Santos Construction.
Thank you very much, Counselor Jacobs.
Thank you, worship. Danielle, the exemptions that are being requested, these are because of the different style of homes they're putting up today as compared to the old townhouses. Like now, they're using this villa. Is that the reason for these?
Nope. It's just a different process. So it's still the same style of unit. It has nothing really to do with what tool they use under the Planning Act, so just no notice. It has to go to the county for approval. I think traditionally, we would have seen these come forward as consents, and then you would have satisfied the conditions of consents and stamped the deed here at the municipal office, and the deeds would be registered the same way. So it's just a different way to go about it.
Any further questions? Moved by Counsel Hammond and supported by Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Carried. Next report is one regarding the, let's see, regarding the Leamington Municipal Marina GH Dock. Mr. Simons?
There we go. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm here tonight to discuss the award of the consultation services portion of the GH Dock replacement. It is recommended to award these services to Dillon Consulting in the amount of $50,000. It is also recommended that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the contract. During the process of cleaning up from the 2010 tornado damage at the marina, insurance covered the cost to replace all but the GH docks. Over the last seven years, this dock has quickly deteriorated. Administration has been performing the necessary repairs in the interim to keep the dock operational. The repair of this dock was originally budgeted for last year. Due to the nature of the work involved and following a condition assessment, it was determined to move this work to 2017. Due to the significance of this investment, it was also determined to bring on a consultant to oversee this project and assist with the design of this dock. It is anticipated that performing the project this way will ensure the docks are installed properly to achieve longevity of this infrastructure. In early June, we posted the RFP, a request for proposal, and reached out to consultants to advise them of this project. Prior to closing on June 28, administration fielded calls from different consultants on this project. Although there were eight plantakers registered, we only received one proposal from Dillon Consulting. The 2017 Marina Capital account has approved funding in the amount of $530,000 for the GH Dock project. The remaining funds are intended to be used for the construction portion of this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you for answering. Mr. Simons, questions? Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. In this dock reconstruction, and I'm wondering, and I've been considering it since I've been looking at this, or the whole nine yards on it, has there been consideration for future development of dockage there? And like currently, we're putting in jet ski ramps and so forth, and there's been interest, I guess, in lift cradles for these high-powered offshore boats that they want to bring in and so forth. And with this consultant review, it's just going to be for that dock, apparently, but I was wondering, could it be expanded to look at what future development could be there? Because there's been a huge trend in the difference in boating styles that are currently taking place. Boats are larger that are coming in, now they're requesting more amenities. And I was wondering, like, would we be handicapping ourselves when we strictly deal with GH Dock? Is there, like, maybe a configuration that would allow for future development and so forth? Because we're getting full now as it is, and I'm just, you know, sort of looking towards the future here.
There is a portion that was built into the proposal request for the consultant to consider future expansion, so we will be exploring that with the consultant during the process of designing the rebuild of the existing GH Dock. Due to the nature of the location, and that's kind of the one that takes the most abuse, we're restricted to how far it currently goes out. We don't want to go much further than that, just because of the damage and being exposed to the wave action and that. Consideration is given possibly to looking at along that promenade area, and that'll be discussed with the consultant on what configuration may work there, as well as other options in the GH Dock footprint to accommodate some of the larger boats.
I appreciate that, Terry, but I guess where I'm going with it as well is like with the, these jet ski ramps that we have down there currently and so forth, like, they're getting sort of hodgepodge all over the place. I just want, maybe consolidation of those, and I think you know where I'm going with this, that I sort of like to see this, you know, maybe brought together and more aesthetic, I guess, proportions, or whatever you want to put it.
We can include that in our discussions, of course, with them, and maybe they have some ideas on some other projects that they've done, and future expansion is part of what we're asking them to look at, as well as the design of the existing dock. So definitely noted, and we'll chat with them once we get them on board a little bit further on that.
And then I assume that would be covered under this, or would be additional costs to have them go to that?
Yeah, the expansion, the area, any future expansion will be covered on this. It'll be part of a proposal plan that they may throw to us, as well as the construction services. So we'll look at what they say with the budget of the GH Dock itself, future expansion, and then maybe build on that if there's room in the budget and so on, and maybe planning for the future as well. So future budgets maybe include some of these expansions. I anticipate that to be included as part of this consultation service.
But that'll move the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Need supporter, Counselor Hammond's support, but you also have a question?
Your worship, thank you. Terry, the question I'm going to ask may be a little unfair, because it actually took place prior to you taking over the leadership of the marina, but were Dillon Construction or Consulting, is that the consulting firm that was used when the tornado was there about rebuilding the other docks? Do you know that?
No, it is not.
So to further my question, then, if they weren't, we had a consulting firm at the time that told us what we needed to do, could we not rely back on that for the replacement of GH Dock? Or is it because, and when I read through the report, that it talks about overseeing the project, is that why we need somebody else on board now?
There's a few reasons we reached out to go this route. One of the reasons is, as Counselor Jacobs mentioned, that there are larger boats coming into the marina, so the footprint 10 years ago, we're going to look at changing to accommodate larger boats, so that'll be part of the design. We're looking at spending a half a million dollars on infrastructure, so I want to make sure that having an appropriate consultant on our side to monitor the construction and the installation of this, so that is another portion of it, too. And, yeah, we've had some difficulties reaching out with that consultant that did work with us in the past, so we felt it prudent to go this way, and we did reach out to consultants we've had in the past, as well as some consultants that have been referred to us from other marinas, and they do have a history of this type of work, so we're confident that Dillon will be able to provide us the service that we need for the construction of it. And then, again, we'll look at expansion prospects once they get on board and look at what we have in the marina.
Okay, thank you, Terry.
Actually, you came at a different angle than I was coming at, but we got to the same answer, so that's good. Counselor Verbeke?
Worthy Mayor, thanks. It's Dillon Consulting. When are they going to have this report done? And are you still expecting this to be completed in the year 2017?
As part of the proposal, the construction plan is to break ground or break water on October, beginning to middle of October. At the very, very worst case, obviously, Mother Nature will dictate whether we can or can't get this done, but it'll be done before the 2018 season begins.
Thanks, worthy Mayor. So Dillon's, Dillon Consulting knows about this, like, keep putting the fire to them, because that's all I'm going to say, but I think everybody else knows what I'm going to say.
Yeah, so we did reach out to them and let them know that they were the consultant of choice, and we'll move forward.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a motion on the floor, then. Any further questions? All in favor of that motion? Motion carries. Thank you, Terry. Next report is one regarding the Leamington Water Wheatley, pardon me, Leamington Wheatley Water Distribution System. Ms. Bello?
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of council. The purpose of this report is to provide counsel with the 2017 Ministry of the Environment and Climate Change Drinking Water Inspection Report for the Leamington Wheatley Distribution System. The Ministry of the Environment and Climate Change conducts annual inspections on municipal residential drinking water systems to determine compliance with the Safe Drinking Water Act, associated regulations, and environmental compliance approvals. The Leamington Wheatley system was inspected on May 16, and the final report was provided in June. As the operator of the system, we're required to provide these inspection reports to the owner through council and obtain a resolution confirming receipt of the report. In addition, the report is to be posted online and available for review by the public. The council report will also satisfy the ministry requirement to advertise the availability of this report. During the ministry inspection, there were no items of noncompliance identified, and there were two recommendations provided for consideration. The first recommendation was to develop a procedure for identifying the conditions that allow the owner or consultant to preauthorize water main alterations during construction. This is something that we are already currently doing, so we will just have to go through the process of formalizing it with a procedure. The second recommendation was to record the time when entries are documented in the daily logbook. This will assist in determining the procedure or order of events if there's something that happens that needs to be tracked, and an example of that could be a boil water advisory. This has also been implemented and communicated to the ministry. The inspection summary rating record generated by the report indicates that we have a risk rating of 0% and a final compliance rating of 100%. In closing, the recommendation is that the report for the Leamington Wheatley Distribution System be received, and that the report be placed on the municipality's website and made available for public inspection during regular business hours. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Wishes of council. Counselor Verbeke?
Worthy Mayor, unlike, I don't know, since where Leamington is a user of water, is there a board of directors also for this, or does anybody from Leamington sit on, I guess, the Wheatley? Because it's not pumped through you, it's not pumped through
No.
... Union, so they have their own pumping station, everything else, but who's their board of directors?
To my knowledge, there is no board of directors, because it's managed by the municipality of Chatham Kent, the Public Utilities Commission there.
Which is kind of what we want to get Union Water, too. Yep. Counselor Dunn?
Through you, worship.
Shannon, we have toured, a lot of us have toured the Union Water. Would there be a possibility to tour the Wheatley facility as well?
I'm sure that would be a possibility. I can always inquire with Chatham Kent. I don't think that would be a problem.
I appreciate that, especially if we're voting on it and understanding better the system and stuff.
Sure. Deputy Mayor, you're moving, are you? Moving. The recommendation, Counselor Hammond's support. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. And we have another one. I guess because you can clean up our dirty water, you're going to clean up our Uptown, too? Is that why you got chosen? Uptown Waste Collection Services, so Ms. Bello, again.
This was quite a lengthy report, I'm sure, probably the longest one I've written since I started, but hopefully it explained the sequence of events, and I'll take everybody through it again, just so that everybody can get an appreciation for it. This report recommends that council support the method and enforcement strategy outlined in the report for the management of Uptown Waste Collection. In preparing this report, I took a look back at historical council reports and realized that everything I'm going to talk about today is something that's been discussed in the past. We're not dealing with anything new here. It's things that previous council and administration have dealt with for years. As we all know, the topic of Uptown Waste Collection has been a longstanding concern for the
Which is kind of what we want to get Union Water, too. Yep. Counselor Dunn?
Through you, your worship. Shannon, we have toured, a lot of us have toured the Union Water. Would there be a possibility to tour the Wheatley facility as well?
I'm sure that would be a possibility. I can always inquire with Chatham Kent. I don't think that would be a problem.
I appreciate that, especially if we're voting on it and understanding better the system and stuff.
Sure. Deputy Mayor, you're moving, moving. The recommendation, Counselor Hammond's support. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. And we have another one. I guess because you can clean up our dirty water, you're going to clean up our uptown, too? Is that why you got chosen? Uptown Waste Collection Services. So Ms. Bello, again.
Okay, this was quite a lengthy report, I'm sure, probably the longest one I've written since I started. But hopefully, it explained the sequence of events, and I'll take everybody through it again, just so that everybody can get an appreciation for it. This report recommends that council support the method and enforcement strategy outlined in the report for the management of uptown waste collection. In preparing this report, I took a look back at historical council reports and realized that everything I'm going to talk about today is something that's been discussed in the past. We're not dealing with anything new here. It's things that previous council and administration have dealt with for years. As we all know, the topic of uptown waste collection has been a longstanding concern for the Leamington, BIA, and the municipality. We are presented with a challenge to maintain a clean and sanitary appearance in our uptown area despite the always-changing collection methods, contractors, and business owners. In the 80s and early 90s, the municipality provided commercial curbside collection, and in 1993, that was transferred over to be the responsibility of the Uptown Leamington Board. A short two years later, Uptown Leamington recognized the difficulty in managing the collection and requested that administration resume that responsibility again. In 1995, council passed a resolution that the town would not collect commercial garbage or assume any responsibility for that collection. For the next four to five years, the BIA hired their own commercial contractor to collect waste in the uptown. In 2000, again, there were additional concerns raised, and the BIA contractor for the uptown collection withdrew their service. The municipality worked with the BIA to develop a solution through another local contractor, Erie Environmental. The options that were provided depended on business size and complexity, but there were a few different things that the, that the business owners could take advantage of, which included marked bags, totes, or bins for collection. In 2004, the BIA was experiencing issues with collection bins on municipal and private property. The bins had become a dumping ground, and the appearance of the uptown was in jeopardy. At that time, administration recommended allocating additional resources to monitor and enhance the tidiness of the waste collection areas in the uptown. In 2007, we developed our Waste Management Bylaw, and it was approved, and since that time, the municipality has continued to manage residential refuse and yard waste collection only. Commercial, industrial, institutional, and agricultural landowners are expected to manage and dispose of their garbage on their own. WDS is the current waste disposal contractor, and the Essex Windsor Solid Waste Authority provides recycling services for the municipality. Since I've been here, administration has received various complaints regarding waste collection practices and aesthetics in the uptown. Garbage and recycling containers clutter the uptown on collection days, collection bins are misused and improperly managed, business owners and residents place garbage on or around litter containers and/or curbside on non-collection days, and litter and debris are always an ongoing concern. In an effort to improve the aesthetics of the uptown, public works staff pick up and dispose of garbage that's left curbside or on and around our litter receptacles daily. Although this is a temporary solution to approve, improve the appearance, it is simply reinforcing the behavior with those residents and business owners who fail to follow proper disposal practices. Over the past year, administration has met with BIA representatives, surveyed the BIA business owners, and also discussed concerns with WDS, Essex Windsor Solid Waste Authority, and other local municipalities. Through those consultations, we have learned quite a bit. We have three mainstreams that we need to deal with, being garbage, paper and cardboard, as well as container recycling, which includes your metal, plastic, and glass. Residential collection in the uptown is completed on Tuesdays, and WDS still maintains the tag system, and that is collected on Fridays. When we did the survey, the majority of those surveyed dispose of their garbage curbside or in private collection bins. In addition to the garbage, there's the recycling component, and Essex Windsor Solid Waste Authority recycles on Mondays for commercial, and they pick up residential recycle on Tuesdays. Essex Windsor Solid Waste Authority indicated to us there is no front-end load container, so the large containers, available in any of the municipalities, and everything is done by a small container or a Herbie Kirby-style bin. In speaking with the other local municipalities, some are very similar to us in that they only manage residential waste, and businesses are expected to manage their own collection, and others provide residential waste collection, and also some uptown or downtown collection in their main BIA centers, while all of their other commercial entities are expected to manage their own. So in summary, we learned that four out of five weekdays in the uptown area, there's some sort of garbage or recycling on the streets. When the businesses are closed on Sunday or Monday, they could put their recycling out, and then it sits there for three or four days. Wednesday is the only actual day when there should be no, no garbage or recycling on the streets. So what we did was, we evaluated three separate alternatives, and I'll just talk about them briefly. The first option that we looked at was doing centralized collection for all waste streams. So as part of that option, we would be required to have three bins in every location that we chose. Ideally, we would have these bins enclosed by a fence to restrict access, and we would also have to look at some sort of garbage levy for commercial properties. We undertook a review of the existing collection bins that are in the uptown, and also looked for available municipal lands where we could potentially add additional bins. Although there are lands available, there's definitely not enough space to have three separate bins in every location. And in addition to that, when we did the surveys, 70% of the respondents said that centralized collection was not something that they would support or be in favor of, and there was a variety of reasons for that. It's inconvenient to haul your garbage and recycling. Instead of making one trip to a bin, you'd have to make multiple trips. They were concerned about the proximity of the bins to their, their location. The issues that we have with existing dumpsters, including odor and vermin, and illegal dumping would just be compounded by adding additional bins. And one of the final concerns was parking. So some, some businesses have their own bins, and people will park around them or near them, and then there's restricted access for the contractor when they actually come and pick up the bin, and the businesses are charged double because they have to make a trip back. So for all of these reasons, we decided that option one was likely not the way to go. The second option that we looked at was maintaining curbside recycling and doing centralized garbage collection only. So what this would entail would be to have one collection bin in a series of locations around the uptown area on municipal lands and/or private property, and trying to get them in close proximity to business locations. The curbside recycling would continue for both residential and business properties, using either small containers or Herbie Kirby units. And again, we would have to look at establishing some sort of garbage levy for the commercial properties that were utilizing this practice. As just discussed in option one, there are lands available. However, in order to locate the bins in close proximity to the businesses, it would be ideal to have additional locations in the four main quadrants of the uptown. When we took a close look at those areas, it was very difficult to find an area in the northeast quadrant behind Gilligan's and the Gingerbread House. As you know, access to that area is very limited, and there are already multiple bins back there with very little space to add any, anything more. In addition to all of the other concerns that I listed before in terms of bin management, odor, and vermin, parking restrictions, those were all things that we, that we took into consideration with that option as well. When looking at maintaining curbside recycling, we looked at bringing it down to possibly one day a week. So instead of having a Monday collection for commercial properties and Tuesday for recycling, why not have all of the recycling collected on the same day? And then that way, it would limit one additional day with clutter on the roads. In order to do this, we would definitely need to consult with Essex Windsor Solid Waste Authority. We have mentioned the idea to them, but definitely haven't told them to proceed yet. It would be a benefit to the uptown aesthetics, and like I said, would reduce the number of days that there's anything curbside. Another consideration with the maintaining curbside collection for recycling was whether or not to use the small containers that people have now versus the Herbie Kirby units, which are the larger units on wheels. Using the Herbie Kirby units would have some, some pros in terms of allowing additional capacity, probably restricting some of the blowing recyclables around the streets on windy days. But when we talked to the business owners and Essex Windsor Solid Waste Authority accordingly, again, we learned that every business would have to have two Herbie Kirby units because you can't mix your recyclables together. There's no contractors around here that deal with mixed recyclables. So all of them would have to have two units. Some of them expressed a concern with location to store these units. They don't have enough space inside of their business to do that, and if they were to store them outside, they were concerned with theft. So for all of those reasons, option two was discarded, but we did carry forward the curbside recycling considerations for option three. So option three is basically maintaining what we're doing now with a couple of additional changes. We would maintain our curbside collection practices for garbage and recycling, and also look at increasing enforcement and education. As outlined earlier, the municipality manages residential garbage collection, and businesses are required to manage their own garbage independently. This will not change. In the uptown, only residential garbage would be placed curbside on Tuesdays, and if businesses choose to use the bag tag system, business garbage would be placed curbside on Fridays. However, as you can imagine, it becomes difficult for WDS to know if they're picking up residential waste or commercial waste without opening up every bag. They do their best to try and manage that. However, if, if it's questionable, WDS will pick it up on the Tuesday if it's sitting curbside. Administration did consider curbside collection for commercial properties within the BIA limits. However, that would likely include adding additional collection days, probably once or twice a week, for business purposes. Based on a prior council decision, which was made in 1995, and the additional waste and clutter that would be placed on the streets if that option were implemented, administration doesn't believe that that is the best approach to move forward with. Curbside residential waste collection will be maintained on Tuesdays, and businesses will have the option to use the bag tag system for Friday collection. They will also be able to use private collection bins or bring the garbage home or to a local transfer station for disposal. And I will note that in the surveys that we did, some people are actually using those two methods, bringing it home. Some only generate a bag a week, or they'll bring it to the transfer station if they have to. The steps that we plan to take related to increasing education and enforcement are hope to alleviate those people that continue to abuse the system. So I'll talk about those a little bit more. In our discussions with the BIA and as part of the survey responses, administration believes that increased education and communication with the business owners will play a vital role in improving the aesthetics of the uptown. With the turnover of merchants, it is believed that many do not understand the garbage and recycling requirements, including collection days, collection methods, and the municipality's obligation to them. Administration proposes to develop a fact sheet to distribute to all business owners and residents in the uptown. The fact sheet will include a summary of garbage and recycle collection days, and approved collection and disposal methods for both residential and business properties. The BIA has agreed to assist the municipality with the development and distribution of this fact sheet. In addition, the BIA will include the fact sheet and all of their new business information packages that they provide. One other thing that we're looking at doing is incorporating waste management questions into our business license application. I think you all know that that's undergoing a review as well. So by incorporating some of these questions, we will make the business owners think about it and identify how they plan to manage their waste, and hopefully we'll prompt questions from them at the time of licensing. Lastly, in conjunction with our increased education and communication, administration also proposes to increase municipal bylaw enforcement and associated fees in the uptown. Existing bylaw enforcement officers and public works staff that are working in the uptown will be asked to monitor contraventions to the Waste Management Bylaw more closely and issue fines accordingly. In an effort to reduce the number of violations and show our commitment to cleaning the uptown, administration is also proposing to increase fines within the BIA boundaries. Administration has applied for a provision to allow for this increase to occur. In summary, option three, as we've outlined, was the preferred option chosen by administration. Administration is committed to working with the BIA to improve the safety and aesthetics of the uptown area by implementing all of these changes. In addition, the uptown laborer that's employed by Public Works will insist, will assist in maintaining the cleanliness of the area and identifying any users that are disobeying the rules. Despite the changes that are proposed, administration anticipates that there will continue to be residential and business owners who do not follow proper procedure. However, our hope is that they are identified and dealt with accordingly, and we will continue to track complaints using City Works and follow up with those repeat offenders. Administration and the BIA will work together to encourage residents and business owners to take ownership and pride in their community, and we will need cooperation from all to improve and ideally maintain the aesthetics in that area. By implementing this strategy at this point, there's no financial impact. The fees issued in accordance with the Waste Management Bylaw will continue to be assessed to the tax roll and collected accordingly. In closing, the recommendation before council is that council support the method and enforcement strategy outlined in this report for management of uptown waste collection. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Hammond?
You want to take a breath?
No, not at all.
Do you want a glass of water?
No.
Shannon, a great report, and you know, and you commented about the fact that it was one of the longest you've written. But I found it really informative, because for those of us that haven't been here and been through these garbage wars, if you want to call them that, you know, it'd give you an order of what's transpired over the years and what brought us to where we are today, because we all hear about the garbage uptown weekly. We all hear that. When I first started going through the report, I thought immediately that option one would be the, the solution, because a lot of the, the homes in Florida, for example, in large parks, they use the recycler, and everybody takes it up front, and they have one bin for cans, and one for bottles, and one for garbage, and I thought maybe that was the answer. But once, again, going through the report, I realized why it's virtually impossible to try to do that here. So to my point, we're back to where we were, and like you, I think that either education or more bylaw enforcement will be the only answer to try and stop the garbage from being piled on the streets the way it is today. So anyway, Shannon, a great report, and thank you.
Counselor Dunn?
Through you, your worship. Shannon, yeah, it was a great report. Also, the education portion of it, I've heard of how bylaw goes out, any new businesses to start up, not through the legal processes, just start up because they ran out the, maybe they should have those forms as well so they can pass that along, it was just a, but it also was brought to my attention about the nighttime drop off of garbage uptown. And that, we use our bylaw, but it's going to be kind of hard. I sit on the BIA, and they also talked about a couple cameras. Now, maybe that would add to assisting us in maybe possibly doing that as well, finding out who's dropping off, because that is a big concern between the bins and the nighttime type drop off. So that's just maybe another thought for you to look into. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Shannon, I lived those days. I know all about that garbage war stuff, and you did a good job on this, I have to, I have to say. I don't think any of us have really thought about all the highs and lows of the whole situation. I do have a teeny bit of an issue with leaving things at the status quo in enforcement. I honestly don't understand why we couldn't go back to collecting the commercial garbage on the same day we pick up the residential. If we already have WDS or whoever it is coming in two days a week, you're already using two days a week. As you said before, the people, there's many, many, probably, I would hazard to guess, probably the majority only have a bag a week. The ones that have the much more garbage usually get involved in the bins. I'm thinking restaurants and so on. So to me, to do one day a week, pick up both, no one has to look inside bags, no one has to buy tags, all we have to do is charge every business a garbage levy. We don't have to charge the residents, but each property owner that houses a business gets charged a garbage levy. That would take care of, to my way of thinking, a whole lot of problems. We, actually, there was no problem prior to, whatever year that was, 1996, when we had our own, our own garbage collection in-house in the municipality, and we, and that entity picked up everything. They didn't care if you were residential, if you were business, they just picked it up. Once we went out, got out of the garbage business, that's when this stuff started. To my way of thinking, one day a week, pick them up regardless of who, and charge every numbered tax roll a garbage levy. To me, that would take care of a whole lot of issues. The garbage would be on the street one day, recycling another day. I realize you said that it would involve adding extra collection days. I don't agree with you, I'm sorry. I really think if we did it one day, we could take care of it. And it would not be the tax base paying for that, because you have the garbage levy in place.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, Shannon, fantastic report, long, but really good, and I appreciate the background on it as well. My questions are maybe going to be more for our bylaw end of it all, though. They might be able to help me a little bit. It wasn't mentioned in the portions about the fines, that, education, more enforcement. I'm just wondering, what our current, what is our current fine level if you are caught abusing garbage disposal, leaving it, dropping it curbside at a receptacle?
I'll let Ms. Horton address that one.
The previous fines...
The previous fines were $125, and we actually have already applied for and received approval for increases to 300 for some of the more minor offenses, and 500.
Yes, okay, good. I think you could even go further than that. I was hoping that they would say it would be more, a heavier fine, you know, even better than 1,000, I thought would be more appropriate. But that's fine. The bag system, I'm not familiar with how that works, so maybe you could take me through that. I don't have much history downtown. But people currently are using the bag system, so people are paying for a bag and tag, but others who are abusing it are putting their garbage out on that same day, and it's coming along and getting collected, correct?
Not on Fridays. The bag tag system, they purchase the tags, they put the tag on their bag, and put it on the curbside Fridays. So if anybody else puts a bag out on a Friday without a tag, WDS would not pick it up. On Tuesdays, it's where it's iffy, because they have to figure out, try and determine whether or not it's residential waste or commercial waste.
Okay. And last, I guess, goes to the private dumpsters downtown. We've got a few that are continuously overflowing, it seems like. Is there any way that we can force or put restrictions on these businesses to do more pickups, to schedule more pickups, or go to a bigger dumpster, if we find that they are continuously overflowing?
And Ms. Horton?
I can answer that. We do have our land maintenance bylaw that we have, in at least one case, served on the owner of a property that has one of the large bins that has been noted to be consistently either overflowing, or at least you can see the garbage over the top of the bin. In any case that we see the garbage over the top of the bin, if it isn't dumped immediately upon notice, we will call inhabit dump and charge the land owner.
Counselor Verbeke.
Where the mayor, I guess, I've got two questions. That's kind of unfair to the property owner who has the dumpster, who uses it, and everybody else in the neighborhood, for example, uses it too. And if it's full, then they just throw it outside. So, I mean, that has to be looked at also. But I mean, this is a great report, great plan. This is Leamington's plan. What's the BIA's plan? Don't they have a scenario? Because I have to agree with the Deputy Mayor, that would be the catch-all. The fines, I'd leave them there and increase them accordingly. If Tim wants to go to 1,000 after the fifth fence, so be it. But when I had an establishment uptown in 2000, 2001, I paid for part of a dumpster in the back, and it was locked. But a lot of times, there was crap outside because it was locked. So I don't think that's the right answer, but I just want to know, does the BIA have the master plan? Are they going to police each other? Are they going to squeal on each other? Should they squeal on each other?
That almost sounded like an applause, but...
Well, I don't think I can speak on behalf of the BIA, but I can tell you that I know they're willing to work with us, and, you know, and able to support us. One of the things that they expressed a concern over is sometimes they don't even know when a new business is opening, right? So they feel that the communication and enforcement side will help a lot. With the business owners that have their own private bins, it's up to them to manage that. And like Ruth said, if we have an issue, then we would deal with it through bylaw. But beyond that, I don't know if Counselor Dunn, sitting on the BIA, knows anymore if they have additional plans. But beyond what I spoke to them about, that's all that I'm aware of. Sorry to throw you under the bus.
Do you have any comment?
Just that they communicated, we had a meeting with the administration about the garbage issue, and they had a big problem, so they sat down with Rob Sharon to speak to what could be solutions for this. And that's why the report came with you, to come back, to be a combined effort, to find out what we could do to make a better solution.
Where the mayor, if I may, I'm just going to talk now. The BIA are the eyes and ears of their own destiny. So I mean, bylaw, bylaw doesn't know what's going half behind these papered-up windows. There's no science. I mean, it's not bylaw. If there's a business opening up beside me, I would know who's coming in the back door even. So they're the ones that should be calling City Works.
Yes, and I can tell you that a lot of the issues that we get through City Works are from neighboring property owners that are calling those in, right? So they are doing that, and I actually just spoke with Kelly from the BIA today, and that's something that they want to enforce as well, in trying to get the thought out there of how things used to be, when business owners went outside in the mornings, and they swept their sidewalks, and they tidied things up. And, you know, I think if people see others doing it around them, hopefully that will entice them, and they can talk to each other, and try and enforce it. But I mean, beyond that, that's what the BIA is working towards.
Deputy Mayor.
I can tell you from actual eyes on this street, the one person who continually has an overflowing bin has been fined. He doesn't give a care about it. Quite frankly, we can fine him all we want, he does not care. We did a walk-through last week, and his bin was overflowing again. I honestly don't think we're going to get any further than we have in the past. I'm very frustrated with this. It's just unbelievable that people cannot clean up after themselves. It's a brand-new day. We have these people coming. It's the same as property maintenance. Back in the day, people mowed their lawn, and took care of their gardens, and all... It just isn't the case anymore, unless we fine them through the roof. I don't think this problem's going to go away, because these people just don't care. They don't have a standard of cleanliness, they don't care. So I'm just not sure how we're going to fix this. I really don't. Despite the fact that we're going to beef things up, will this take care of it? No, I don't think so. I think we're going to be talking about this five years from now. That's why I suggested if we do the pickup one day a week, and we pick up everything, it might at least alleviate some of the problem. But honestly, to take care of the offenders, they're always going to be offenders.
Counselor Hammond.
Your Worship, thank you. Shannon, was the BIA aware, I mean, I know we have representatives here for the BIA, but were they, with Kelly, were they aware that this report was coming to council tonight?
Yes.
Because, you know, they're mentioned throughout the entire report a number of times, and I think that it would have been incumbent upon them to be here tonight, to hear some of the comments made from council, so they could take it back to their members and say, "Listen, you know, there's some real concerns here." I think they should have been here. I don't mean to suggest that you didn't ask them, I just think knowing it was coming forward tonight, they should have been here.
Rob and I, and Ken Brown, also went to a BIA meeting and sat down with all of them to review the issue that was in 2016. So they all were involved in that discussion at that time. And I just wanted to comment on Deputy Mayor's comment on the collection bins. I think doing the curbside, or, sorry, the curbside collection for the commercial properties, it's still not going to get rid of the bin issue, unless we tell them all they can't have private collection bins. And then I think there will be a difficulty in establishing a levy based on the quantity and the type of garbage that people are generating. You know, like you have people that are generating one or two bags a week to somebody like Gabriel's or Bratz that have multitudes of garbage, and how would you, I mean, do you do it on business type? And those are things that we could look at, if that's what council wants to do. But those would all definitely have to be considerations. Or do we have exclusions for some properties that are managing their waste accordingly, and we don't have to worry about? There's a whole bunch of other questions that would have to be looked at.
Counselor Dunn.
Through you, Your Worship. Regarding, first of all, we talked about, they mentioned about, somebody did about BIA and calling City Works, and they do very often. In fact, there's a lot of times when Lisa promoted it at the BIA meetings, calling about City Works, about the business owners that lack in the downtown area that need to be improved upon. And it was also mentioned at one of the meetings about the cameras. That's why I reiterated the cameras about, because of nighttime dumping, or dumping it off peak times, or after your garbage collection on one day a week, and then it's showing up on the curb, which is the other reason why they suggested the cameras. I have a couple of other questions, if you indulge me, Your Worship. Friday, so Friday's a commercial pickup. First of all, like you said, the Tuesday is the residential pickup. So any commercial business could dump garbage out on that day and pick it up anyway, and it would get picked up on the Tuesday, right? It's really hard to enforce, like you said. Then you, Friday, they put out their business, and they don't have the proper tag on it. How long will that sit there, if it doesn't have a tag on it, to be picked up? Does our garbage person that goes through the weekend pick that up?
Public Works staff would pick it up.
Because we have that one that works Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, through the weekend? Okay. I do like what Deputy Mayor said about regarding, like you said, Gabriel's has their own bin, Source Sports has their own bin, but if you had the one-day-a-week pickup, that's less garbage picked up or on the curb on a regular basis. We're talking Tuesday, Friday, and then recycling, so that's three days. I know you're cutting it down from, was it, five days a week pickup now, to where it's going to be, get it down to just two days. Recycle one day, garbage the other day. And if you need more, then you take additional business. And then to also put into the fact that those businesses that take the effort to have a bin, to make sure that they shouldn't be charged an extra levy if they've taken care of their own garbage, and can prove that they are. I think that's a great idea. Anyway, that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Counselor Wilkinson.
Thank you, Worship. I'm just wondering if, going back to Deputy Mayor McDonald's comments, what if we were to, and that's another question for you, Shannon, how quickly are you ready to act upon the actions suggested in this report, I guess?
Right away.
Right away?
Yeah, Kelly and I talked about it today. We just have to get into discussions with Essexman's or Solid Waste Authority, but I don't think that would be a lot of effort to discuss with them about switching the recycle to one day per week, and then we would just work on the fact sheet and getting that out.
So if that's the case, I don't have all the greats, I wish I did have, I've been one who's been a habitual complainer, but I never have solutions. I'll be the first to admit that. But to go back to Deputy Mayor McDonald's comments, what if we re-look at this about a year from now? We put a date to come back and look at this, to see if these policies, if they're having any success? Would that satisfy the Deputy Mayor? Better?
Give it a year, see what happens. I mean, it doesn't matter, we'll be just voting on this report anyway. So if it gets turned down, then we'll have to come up with other answers, and if it gets accepted, we'll see what happens. But I know we'll hear about it in the near future, if it doesn't work, so. Counselor Verbeke.
Where the mayor, it doesn't matter if you put out two bags, or four bags maximum, uptown, whatever. In the country, let's call it mercy of township, farmers, homeowners can put four bags out, and they're charged a levy. Now, Counselor Dunn, I'm sorry, my neighbor has five residents there. He doesn't put one bag out. They come in twice a month to dump his, twice a week to dump his bin. But however, he's still charged that amount in his taxes. So, you know, that's bonus for somebody else. So you charge them all, that's what I think. You just charge everybody that uses the system. And before you finish your report, I'd like to hear the BIA's comment on that.
Okay, so I'm jumping in, because I've gone through this garbage wars enough time, too. As much as it sounds nice to have one day a week to pick it up, each and every one of you own a business uptown, and you're paying 100 bucks a month for garbage collection. But I own one that creates a lot of garbage, and I'm going to get rid of my bins, because now I don't have to pay for that cost, and they can pick up my 300 bags every week for the same price that they're doing. Yes, that's what all of you are saying, everybody pay a fee. Well, it doesn't say that either. It's just picking up the garbage one day a week. So as a business owner, I'm going to say, "Hey, thank you very much for subsidizing my garbage pickup." That's the biggest problem. That's what Shannon was trying to address. Now you're opening up a whole big can of worms, so how do we say, and even you, Counselor, about the resident in the county area of Leamington that has a garbage bin? So if he's looking after it, paying his own garbage bin dumping fees, why should he pay a garbage fee, right? That's the same thing we're going to, but who's going to monitor that? Who's going to set the fees? Myself, I think this report is going to be about the best we can do for now, until we see how it works out. That's just my opinion, and I want to go back to Counselor Dunn's comments about cameras. This one always makes me laugh. Cameras in the Uptown Corps have been turned down, I don't know how many times. And the reason is because who's going to pay for the cameras? Who's going to pay for the installation? Who's going to pay for the maintenance? And who's going to pay for the monitoring? Nope, they'll say they want it, but as soon as you put that price cost out there, it's, "Well, yeah, no, no, no." It's been turned down so many times, I don't even want to talk about it anymore. Well, and that's where it always comes from, too, is from the BIA. And it just, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, we want, 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 but we don't want to pay for it." And I don't think I, as a taxpayer who doesn't have a business uptown anymore, should have to pay for that. I don't want that on my tax bill. You want to track who's damaging your property? Put your own security cameras up. It's your property, you protect it, right? That's my comeback, and I'll stick by that all the way. This is a very aggravating topic, and Deputy McDonald is most right when she says, "We can't understand why people cannot take care of their own stuff." What is wrong with people today? What's wrong with the business owners? What's wrong with the property owners? Why don't they have any pride and care? And that's the ultimate problem, and that's why we're sitting here talking about this again, and will be again. Yeah. So myself, I went through the report too, and I would love nothing more than seeing one day a week, get rid of all the refus, let us like we used to do, right? When we had our own garbage collections up here. But I don't think you're going to be able to work that out in an affordable situation. I think we're going to end up with a lot more angry property owners and merchants uptown by doing it that way. I could be wrong. But for now, I think this was a really great report. I loved the history again, it made me laugh, and it makes me frustrated. So I'll be supporting the report as written, but everybody's up to their own on this one, again. So do we have a mover and a secondary, or are there any more questions or comments? I should be more fair about that. Counselor Dunn?
What, through you, Worship, what Counselor Wilkinson said about bringing back, or just understanding how we are a year from now regarding this, and with the report that's brought forth now, is that a possibility?
Sure it is. You just add it on as a friendly amendment to the motion, and it'll be done deal. But I think we'll hear about it before, before that time. I do. So the recommendation, you're moving the recommendation of the report. Moved by Counselor Jacobs. Support by Counselor Hammond. Discussion on the motion. Oh, I'm sorry, the two of you, did you want to amend, put that friendly amendment in there about the bringing it back in a year for review? Okay. Mover and secondary agree to that? Well, I'm sure we'll hear about it sooner, but... Well, yeah, you can. If it comes back to us, we will. You know we will. Another one. Oh, all right, let's keep on track. We're talking about... All right, so we, personal point of order, there you go, yeah. Anyway, a motion, a motion on the floor, as written, option number three, with the amendment that it comes back in a year for review. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of that motion? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to the next report, which is one regarding the Danforth Avenue sewer separation and road reconstruction. Mr. Botham.
Can't talk without my pen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of this report is to award the Danforth Avenue Sewer Separation and Road Reconstruction Project to J.J. Lepere Infrastructure. So as background, the sewer separation in the area of Danforth Avenue is the next step in the continuation of the municipality's sewer separation program. The extent of the reconstruction under this work, or this contract, is Danforth Avenue between Seekliffe Drive and Hayward, and you can see that in Figure 1 in the report. On June 5, 2017, the municipality was notified that we were receiving funding from the CWF program for just over $3.4 million, and that... from the CWWF program for just over $3.4 million, and that can be used to fund up to 75% of projects like this. And in this case, the works specifically will include new sanitary sewers, storm sewers, the removal of the existing combined sewer, replacement of old water mains, some new trees, and the complete reconstruction of the roadway and the addition of sidewalks. A public information center was held February 22nd, 2017, to notify residents and property owners of the work, and the municipality's intent to assess a share of the cost of the works to benefiting property owners. Thirty parties attended the meeting and provided similar comments. The residents support the need for separated sewers, but they feel the property owner's share for the work is too high. Residents were also concerned about the current traffic situation and perceived speeding in that segment of Danforth. The shared cost of the work is presented in the report as attached Schedule A, and that's the schedule of construction cost assessed to each landowner. And that was included with the invitation that we sent out to the landowners. So they've had that, and they saw it at the public information center. I'd like to talk a little bit more about that shared cost of the work. For this project specifically, the shared cost recoveries from the property owners are limited to the construction of the new sanitary sewer and their private service connection. All other works, such as the roadway, curbing, sidewalk, will be funded through the CWWF program, our water surcharge program, and general taxation. And that's presented in the finance section in Table Two. And the property owner's share that's in the assessment schedule is established by way of our annual fees bylaw, and it's based on the construction of a smallest diameter sewer constructed at an average depth and average conditions, or sorry, at a minimum depth under average conditions. And we look at past construction projects every year to try to reset that value to make sure it's consistent and do our best to make sure it's fair. Danforth Avenue, just to address sidewalks, Danforth Avenue is classified as a collector's street, and therefore sidewalks should be constructed on both sides of the road. And this was discussed at the public information session, where residents and owners could provide input on the location of the sidewalk with respect to the roadway. So after hearing comments from all of the parties that attended the meeting, we're presenting this with the construction of sidewalk on both sides of the road, but the sidewalk will be placed against the back of the curb with the least impact to the property owners. And to address the traffic concern and the perceived speeding, if you look at Figure Two in the report, what we tried to depict was that we're trying to calm traffic, slow traffic down with some offsets in traffic. So we're going to install these bump boats or lane shifts along Danforth. We'll have alternating parking every 100 meters or so, so that traffic has to slow down. It'll feel narrower, you'll have to move from left to right, and we'll provide parking on both sides of the road along Danforth in this segment. But by alternating the parking on both sides of the road, it slows traffic down. It's a traffic calming method. The sidewalk will follow along a straight line. It won't follow along the curb bump outs. So on June 29th, the municipality received three tenders for this work, and J&amp;J LaPere was the low tenderer at just over $2.7 million excluding tax. We did present in Table Two of the financial impact section, the overall budget for the project was just over $4 million. And again, it was funded through the CWWF program, taxation, a recovery amount from the benefiting property owners, our water surcharge program. And you'll also see in Table Two that there's an amount of money from utilities. Essex Power is paying for a certain amount of work on this project, approximately $168,000 through the contract for some relocation and some new electrical work in the area. Sorry. Post-tendering though, the good news is that the estimated total project cost is just over $3 million. I'd like to draw your attention to, also to Table Three, just to note that we are looking for an approximate recovery from the residents of just under $600,000. But the total, again, the total project cost for the sewer component is just over $1 million. I'm just trying to point out that of the $3 million in construction, we're looking for a recovery of just under $600,000 from the benefiting property owners. So following construction and after reconciling all the project costs, the administration will bring forward a report and an associated bylaw to counsel to assess the charges to the benefiting property owners. And they will be invited to that meeting, and they can address counsel if they wish. So we are recommending that this work be awarded to J&amp;J LaPere.
Thank you, Mitch. Counselor Dunn? Oh, pardon me, Counselor Jacobs first.
Thank you, Worship. Alan, I'm a little confused with this. The CWF, the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund, is for 3.4. But yet you're turning around and saying that all of the works, such as roadway, curbing, sidewalks, will be funded from that. Why is that not going directly to the sanitary sewer project if it's clean water and waste? I guess I'm a little, maybe you can enlighten me on that one?
Thank you. The Clean Water Wastewater Fund, the money that Leamington received is going to fund four projects. We've got the Danforth sewer construction, we've got a major design project in another neighborhood. It's funding sewer feasibility study along Secliff Drive and the construction of Parkdale. The program allows for the municipality. So that's where the $3.4 million comes from, because if you add up the CWWF portion in Table Two, it's far less than 3.4 million. But that's the total amount of money that Leamington's receiving.
So those funds can be used at our discretion, in other words?
Yes, that's correct. When we proposed this work to council, when we applied for the CWWF program, we noted that we can use the works for all of the construction that's involved in the reconstruction of a road project. That includes the sewer construction, catch basins, curbing, sidewalk. That's all eligible cost under the program. And that we were also anticipating a share from the benefiting property owners.
So, in other words, we could apply more of that funding towards the sanitary sewer project and reduce the impact to the landowner? Is that?
My answer to that would be, it wouldn't be recommended that we continue forward with our sewer bylaw that requires, when we do a reconstruction in a neighborhood for sewer separation, we've established a unit rate for the mainline sewer and established a rate for the sewer connection. And we can use the funding programs to pay for the associated works. And you can see that the total cost of the sewer works is less than, or sorry, is greater than the amount of money we're expecting from the residents. So that would be my suggestion, that we wouldn't do that. We would stay with our policy of charging residents, benefiting residents in sewer separation programs.
I appreciate that. I guess where I'm coming from with that as well is the fact that we all get the calls about the cost of the connections to sanitary sewer systems. And if I may, have one more question, Your Worship. With the contract going to LaPere, and he's involved in so many large projects or that large project we have, does he have the capabilities to carrying this out? And when would he start on this? Because he's going to be so involved with the arrows and so forth. I'm just wondering if he's overextending here? Will we get our work done in a timely manner?
Yes, thanks. J&amp;J LaPere does have a number of sewer crews, experienced sewer crews, so they have crews available to do the Peely Drive project. And they're just finishing up the Marlboro Reconstruction Project, and it should coincide with when they want to start this. So we anticipate paving of the Marlboro Project in a couple of weeks, and that's when they want to start the next project, which would be the construction of Danforth. So the crews that you see there will move over to Danforth.
Counselor Dunn?
Through you, Your Worship. Alan, as further to what Counselor Jacobs was saying about, I understand the bylaw to be $320 per meter for the sewers. But if the cost comes back at a lesser amount, say 311 for the assessed amount, would that be billed to the actual owners or residents? Or is it standard 320? When you get to the final assessment and everything?
Typically, when the project's over, we reconcile costs and we check against the bylaw. We've brought back prices that are, if the price comes in less than, that's the number we bring back to council in the final assessment schedule.
Counselor Hammond?
And Your Worship, thank you. Alan, in order to avert some of the questions that were noted, all of us are going to field at some point, when you send out the assessment to the homeowners, do you also send out a letter form that would indicate that they're only paying for the sewer separation itself as opposed to the new curbs and the sidewalks and all of those things? And I think a lot of perception of these homeowners, I think that they think that they're paying for those as well.
Question or direction?
It's a question. I'm asking, do they do that, do you do that currently? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I saw you writing, which is a good thing.
Typically, we do. I can't remember verbatim our last letter, but we do try to suggest that we do include a total expected recovery cost, and we show a total project cost, so they can see the difference, that they're paying a share of the total cost of the works.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alan, if you could explain this to me in the keep it simple, stupid fashion that I require. I see from the tender estimated cost, so J&amp;J LaPere is saying that the total sewer tender would come to one, slightly over 1 million. And we are charging the property owners just under 600. So they are actually getting a fairly substantial reduced rate, because if we would charge them the 1.1 million, they would be paying pretty much double, correct?
I guess that is unfair, because the sewer portion also includes some storm sewer work.
Okay.
So the total, I didn't break out the sanitary versus the storm cost.
Okay. All right, that's good. I just needed to know that. And just further to what Counselor Jacobs says, we've all been on this, around this table a long time. It doesn't matter what neighborhood sewers are being reconstructed, whether it's our top end neighborhood that's paying the most taxes or the one that's, people are picking up bottles to supplement their income. No one ever wants to pay for taxes or for sewers. It doesn't matter what it is. We're all going to get the same complaints, but it needs to be done. So, anyway, I just wanted to know if I was understanding that correctly. Thank you.
Counselor Verbeke?
Where the mayor, thanks. Just to make sure, Counselor, it's already been stated about the 1 million, so the residents do know that they are getting a break? Are you going to send that out in a letter? Are you going to proofread the letter first? Because you had a lot of angry residents coming in with the first letter that went out. And could you tell me, are you going to have the curbs like Secliff Drive? Or what kind of curbs are you going to put there? I guess, just throwing out there for your information, I guess the curbs are the ones I want to know about.
They won't be the swell curve. You're doing the hard.
Oh, the curb will be a barrier curb with a concrete gutter.
Okay, and that is going to be at the roadway now instead of five feet in? You're having the sidewalk start right at the road now?
Yes.
So they're going to gain five feet?
I don't have that exact measurement, but I can tell you that the curbing is going to be a barrier type curb, and that we're putting a six-foot sidewalk against the back of the curb.
Okay, and Counselor Jacobs' question, he'll probably ask anyway, so you are cutting all the driveways? To match the cement?
Yes.
Whether it's stamped or not, you're cutting them all out?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, Worship. Alan, quick one, you're probably, you'll know which home I'm talking about, but do we have room for everybody now to park their vehicle, whether it be a small car, large pickup truck? With the sidewalks going in, if everybody parks their vehicle up close to their houses, they're not going to be on the sidewalk that's being built? Has that been solved? First curb on Danforth is what I'm talking about, most north end. 95.
Oh, the, sorry, you're referring to that, the short stretch at the north end? Can I get back to you on that? I don't believe that we've addressed every concern through that neighborhood. I don't have the answer to that question. But typically, we don't have room for everybody's car to park on the street, because we have setbacks from intersections. And we've got the intersection at Secliff and the intersection at Carolina Woods, and there's always a setback. So we always lose parking.
Well, I'm meaning on the driveway itself.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
95 Danforth, Jerry Lou Brown's parking.
Sorry, I thought you were referring to parking on the road. But yes, we have talked to that resident, and we are working out a driveway situation that she can handle.
Thank you.
Counselor Verbeke?
Where the mayor, is six feet the standard now for sidewalks?
We have two standards. If there's a space between the back of curb and the sidewalk of two or three feet or more, we'll put a five-foot wide sidewalk. If it's touching the back of curb, we'll put a six-foot wide sidewalk.
So getting back to the tender, I have to tell you, I did like the design with the calming measures that are in there. And when you explained the alternate parking, I think that's really a great idea too, so kudos to you. I was happy to hear that the sidewalks are going to the curb, because I think that will address most of the concerns that we had, that the residents had about not having quite enough room in their driveway to park their six cars and four boats. Okay, a little tongue-in-cheek there, but there are issues in there, where some of the houses are built out closer to the road than setback. So it seems to me that your department has done very, very well at addressing as many issues as possible. I'm really happy to see that cost come down, the estimate anyway. And I like the way it's broken out. Like the deputy mayor said, it may be your answer saying it's unfair to put it that way, but boy, when I look at it, I see that we're spending 1.1 million on sewers, whether it's separated or whatever, but only 600,000 of that is being billed to the property owners. And all of this other money that makes up the 3 million is being covered as well. So that's a huge benefit to that neighborhood, to the residents in general. And I'm hoping that the other half, the north half of Danforth, is going to be in the near future planning as well, because I think that road has needed this kind of work for a long, long time. So I'm happy to see it. Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, Worship. Just one quick question now. What is the general setback that the municipality owns from the edge of the roadway back?
I don't generally like to answer that question with a firm number, because a typical right-of-way could be 20, 22 meters wide. And if you're lucky, if we're lucky, the road is set in the middle of the right-of-way, but rarely is it in the middle. So one side of the road can be slightly different than the other side. Over the years, roads get shifted and moved in a right-of-way, so it's difficult to say. So if a right-of-way is 22 meters and a typical road is, say, nine meters wide to the back of the curb, that leaves you with 11, sorry, 13 meters. And if you want to divide that by two, that would be your average setback.
So we have a report here, J&amp;J LaPere at 3.1, Amaco at 3.7, and some, Counselor Jacobs moves, Counselor Hammond support. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. Next one is a report regarding the tender results signalization Oak and Wagle. Alan, are you doing this one as well? Okay.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of this report is to award the Oak Street-Wagle intersection and the Act of Transportation Implementation Project to Parisensei Construction Limited. And just as a bit of background, if you don't mind, if you could refer to Figure One for a moment. In 2013, the MMM group updated the municipality's short-term action plan, transportation action plan, and they provided recommendations for the operational issues at specific intersections and corridors. and corridors within the municipality. And I'm going to try to illustrate how this project evolved from a full, up to this full traffic signal that we're proposing to put in, from a typical crossing, from a pedestrian crossing. The Oak Street East and Wagle Street was, intersection was identified as an intersection of concern in 2007. There's a high volume of pedestrians crossing this intersection during peak hours, to travel between residential areas and the two schools. And if you look at, sorry, if you look at Figure Three, we tried to illustrate the neighborhood, the top circle being the intersection of Oak and Wagle, and then to the south of that is Queen Elizabeth School and St. Michelle School. So there is a high volume of traffic going between the residential areas to the north and the two elementary schools located to the south. And then in, so that was 2007. In 2013, the report, the updated report recommended that an intersection pedestrian signal, similar to that you'd see at the high school, or at the trail crossing by the new high school. The recommendation at that time was to install an intersection, or an intermediate pedestrian signal, and that is shown in Figure Two, as that white line crossing Oak Street. The report also suggested that a full traffic signal was not desirable in 2013. The explanation was that a full signal at the Oak-Wagle intersection would attract people. We're aware that there's a bit of an issue at the intersection of Danforth and Oak, it's difficult to get out of there. So if you can look at Figure Three and Figure Two at the same time, I guess, the suggestion was that if we put a traffic signal at the Oak-Wagle intersection, it would draw traffic off of Danforth through the neighborhood of the school, to try to use the traffic signal at Oak and Wagle, because it is difficult to turn left sometimes because of the traffic there. But the recommendation of a half signal would not likely draw traffic in that area. So that company, MMM at the time, did not recommend a full signal. Some things have changed in the meantime, and in 2015, we asked for a specific review of that recommendation, together with an analysis of the school-related parking and traffic issues that we've been experiencing at Queen Elizabeth and St. Michelle School. And R.C. Spencer looked at that for us in a report, and recommended, from their review, to include a full signal at the Oak and Wagle intersection, and also include an all-way stop at Maxon and Wagle, that's the second red circle from the top in Figure Three, and an all-way stop at the intersection of Alderton and Danforth, to try and improve the traffic situation around the schools. So all those things together deleted that issue of a traffic, of drawing traffic through the neighborhood by the schools, and the installation of a full signal at Oak and Wagle will create gaps in the traffic along Oak Street. So it should be easier theoretically to get out of the Oak-Danforth intersection as well. So through all that, and through their analysis, they did recommend, R.C. Spencer did recommend that we put a full signal at the Oak and Wagle intersection. And that's why we're here today, to look at awarding a construction contract for that work. So on June the 27th, we closed tenders. At that time, we did receive one tender from Perisensee Construction, and the amount was just under half a million dollars. I did note in the report, under the comments section, that there are additional works related to the implementation of the Act of Transportation Plan. There's additional works coming from new guidelines from the Ontario Traffic Manual, Book 18, that were included in this tender. We also included some line items for painting bicycle lanes along Oak Street from Plumbrook Drive to Victoria Avenue, and the Oak Street Trail Extension from the end of our trail on the south side of Oak, to the west toward the traffic signal at the Highberry-Cancow intersection. The construction, the total construction for all the works is estimated to take approximately 25 working days. I'd also like to note, at least under the comments section, that the recent works being completed by Union Gas along Oak Street East are in part to make room for some of the infrastructure that we need to install for the construction of this new intersection, particularly some new left-turn lanes, and some of the traffic signal infrastructure. The subject project will not start until the Union Gas works are completed, or at least well out of that subject area. So in the financial impact section, I tried to explain how we ended up at a half a million-dollar project. So the single tender of just over $500,000 from Perisensee, plus $35,000 for contract administration, and $35,000 for right-of-way widening, and some utility relocations, results in a total project estimate of $578,000. But in the analysis of the tenders, it does show that the contractor's tender price for the traffic signal works, and the associated line painting, and the traffic signage is approximately $280,000, which is comparable to the engineer's estimate of $270,000. The contractor's tender amount for painting of the bike lanes along Oak Street is approximately $8,000, $18,000, which matches the amount budgeted within the 2017 Act of Transportation Facility project budget. The project estimate that was prepared in 2017, for the 2017 budget, was for the construction of a traffic signal and associated line painting and traffic control, much like the Seacliff-Shirk intersection that we did last year for around $230,000. But we did combine a significant amount of active transportation work. In addition to the painting of the bike lanes, there's construction of an off-road trail to try to, we're working towards linking the trail at Oak Street in Ontario, westerly towards the trail that crosses the Highberry-Cancow property. This won't complete the link, but it will construct a significant portion of it. We also are including a significant amount of, I'll call it state-of-the-art cycling facilities. You'll notice in Figure Four, there's a cycling refuge lane. The people in the industry call it a jug handle, where cyclists can, if they want to turn left from Oak Street, south along Wagle, they take refuge in that lane, they'll have their own traffic signal. These are all things that are being proposed and encouraged through the Ontario Traffic Manual and the traffic guidelines. We also found that there was a significant amount of utility relocation work, and this did extend the construction time somewhat, and likely affected the contractors tendering. So in Table One, I tried to break down the construction costs, and noted that the traffic signal work is around $280,000. There's some road reconstruction work to accommodate bike lanes at just under $130,000. The trail extension is just under $60,000. I noted the bike lane painting for $18,000. Some utility relocation work for $35,000, and then the contract administration. And there's also a contingency allowance within this for $25,000. We are also recommending that this additional work, if approved, is funded through the federal gas tax program and taken from the federal gas tax reserve. So administration is recommending that we move forward with this project, and that the project be awarded to Perisensee Construction.
Thank you, Alan. Big, big, big report. I want to ask real quick questions here. First of all, looking at Figure Four, the design there, I know it gets clustered, but when I really look at it, I think, this is so awesome, seeing those bike lanes going along Oak Street, finally. I know there's room there for that. I like the jug handle, whatever you referred to it there, I thought that's a great idea, the separations that are there, and I'm glad it's a full signal. I think that's really what is needed there. I'm not a traffic engineer, whatever. So that, as complicated as that look, I think it's going to be actually wonderful for that, for that area, and really good for traffic flow. But I want to take you back to Figure Number Three, because I guess I missed reading that while I went through this report. But you've mentioned it now, that you're going to do a four-way stop at Maxon, well, actually, would it be a three-way stop at Maxon and Wagle, and a four-way at Alderton and Danforth? So what's the explanation, the logic behind that? I'm not getting it. I'm not sure how it's going to prevent people running down Sherman and going through the lights, or is that what the thought behind it is? Take it away.
Thank you. There will be a full report coming to council to speak to that neighborhood. The purpose of the all-way stops is not solely to deter people from getting to that Wagle-Oak intersection. The consultant has looked at the school, the school situations, and even the latest information, they've looked at that as well, for school closures. They've looked, they've talked to both boards, they understand where they're going in the near, and not long-term, but midterm, where they're going with their enrollment and their plans. We understand that there's a commitment from both school boards to improve some of the parking situations in the areas, and you'll see that in the upcoming report. There's some actual, there's some sharing between the two boards in some of the infrastructure they're going to build. But in looking at the parking, drop-offs, kiss-and-rides, and things like that, and how the neighborhood operates, both in the morning and in the afternoon, those were all taken into consideration to try to best accommodate that traffic and the parking. And it was, there were a number of combinations analyzed. I don't have the different scenarios that they looked at, this was the recommended scenario. But the purpose, the purpose of this was really to make that neighborhood operate better. The purpose of the all-way stops was to make the neighborhood operate better.
Okay. But tonight, your report is more focused on the actual lit intersection, not so much on this, and you're bringing back something on the red circles, let's call it, part.
That's correct. And the reason for that is, we have been communicating with the school board, if I may. We have been communicating with the school board, we've had a number of meetings with them. The traffic signal work came up and was completed much faster than those discussions and negotiations.
I can imagine. Again, excellent design, I like the layout on the traffic signals. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alan, just, one is curiosity. Do we need to buy some property there on the corner of Wagle, since we're widening that turn there? Looks like the, you know, we're, well, I'm looking at Figure Four, and it shows the left-turning lane and the right, and then it just seems that we've got another, no, maybe I'm reading it incorrectly.
You are correct, that we did have to purchase property. We purchased two slivers of land on the southeast corner of Wagle and Oak, and that's included in these costs.
Okay, thank you. And then, and this is probably beef for Ms. Orton, will this eliminate the need for crossing guards at this point, then, when we have a stoplight, or no?
We are still looking at that through engineering. It's not anticipated that it will, at this time, eliminate the need for the crossing guards. We believe we're going to be maintaining them. And just in follow-up to Mr. Botham's response, it wasn't actually purchasing the property, we acquired easements. So the utilities are on, and it was really on behalf of the utilities. So the utilities were moving into the easements, so we're just facilitating that.
Counselor Verbeke?
Where the mayor, thanks through you. I'm glad that the bike lanes are coming, but I'm really glad they're just painted, they're not going to be bike lanes like at the Civic Centre, the bump-and-run, or whatever you want to call it. And you said 25 days. Is this going to be ready for the school year?
I can't guarantee that. We are working the best we can with Union Gas. We do anticipate being able to start the second week of August, that's what we anticipate. If that's the case, and we do get the materials ordered, I did note that in the report, there's an eight-to-10 week delivery time for some of this equipment. So we're looking at a very tight schedule, and things would have to go perfect, perfectly well, to make that happen.
So I think Counselor Verbeke, you're talking about the bike lane, the raised bike lane at the Essex Civic Centre? Yeah, okay. Ours are road level, right? Yeah, okay. I have to agree. Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. Al, I think this traffic light is long overdue. You know, for the protection, I mean, for the motorists as well, but for the protection of all of those young folks that cross that intersection. We had a very near miss this early spring, well, it was a transport truck heading east on Oak Street, and hit the brakes hard enough that it blew the brake lines in the truck trying to come to a stop when there was children crossing the street. And it was scary, because the sun was in his eyes and he couldn't see. So I'm sure he will be able to see a traffic light, so, well done.
Counselor Jacobs?
I think, your worship, Alan, I'm sure this is all high-tech, correct? Single system? You know where I'm going already, don't you? Anyway, I was just saying that there's a lot of residents around that, and I'm sure that this sound system that we have installed, like at Seacliff and Shirk, is still going away like loudly in the evenings, and I'm just wondering, will we be able to remedy this before all these neighbors start complaining about that?
Instead of just John?
We, I was hoping you were going to tell me tonight that it was fixed. We've been, we've been working with the consultant and the contractor, and I understood that they were going to attend the site on Thursday last week at night, when it's the quietest, to try to set the minimum sound level, and then let the system find itself during the day, and then quiet back down to that minimum sound level. I did not get a response yet from the consultant. But that's our intention.
And like, in that particular, like, it is loud, like, especially on a quiet evening and so forth. I just want to save some animosity going forward on this, if it's corrected, before we get into that portion of it. But thank you. You're aware.
Yeah, the rest of council doesn't have any trouble with the Seacliff crossing, no? Sure. Are there any further questions on this report? If not, moved by the Counselor Hammond, supported by the Deputy Mayor. Discussion on the motion, all in favor? Motion carries. Next report is one regarding Johnson Ave. and Grace Avenue, no parking, pardon me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please refer to Figure, to Figure Two, if you don't mind. Administration has received complaints from residents on Grace Avenue regarding vehicles parking too close to the intersection of Johnson and Grace. We've also had complaints about vehicles, it could be associated with hospital staff or visits to the hospital, parking on Grace and Johnson Avenue too close to the driveway openings and to the intersections. So we did, our staff did attend the site, and noted that sightlines could be improved for motorists that are using the roadway, by implementing some no-parking zones on all legs of that intersection. Grace Avenue, west of Johnson Avenue, is narrow, there's no on-street parking spaces available on that leg of the intersection. The existing no-parking zones to the south of Grace Avenue, and those are the solid lines, the solid lines in the report indicate the existing parking controls, and the dash lines indicate the proposed. So the existing no-parking zones on the south side of Grace Avenue, east of Johnson and west, on the west side of Johnson, south of Grace, they're appropriate, and they seem to be working. The red line is a permit designated area already, a permit parking area already. So really, when you're, we're looking at the intersection, it's on a skew, it's a difficult intersection to begin with. There really is no space for parking on the west leg, because it's just simply too narrow. There's too many cars that are parking too close to that intersection, because there is no parking control. So we do need to establish some control and some significant sightlines for the motorists. So to post it according to these recommendations, we included a number of tables in the report. They would have to be included in, or amended into our existing traffic bylaw to make those improvements. And so we are recommending that we do establish these no-parking zones, and that we do amend our traffic bylaw. I also did note in the report that the estimated cost to do this work is approximately $840,000 for the signage.
Eight hundred and forty thousand?
Sorry, eight hundred, eight hundred and forty, eight hundred and forty dollars.
Eight hundred and forty. I like that number a lot better. I like that number a lot better. Counselor Verbeke?
Where the mayor, thanks. So the residents have complained. You're going to put up the no-stopping. Well, that's the next one, too, is going to be the same thing, no parking. But do the residents know that they can't park there, or they have, no guests can park there, too? I mean, it's going to be a bugger if they're parking there now, because I got some comments for the next report coming up, too, but it's for everybody, right, no parking?
It is for everybody, yes, and it's a situation where we, where it was drawn to our attention and we reviewed it, and it really doesn't satisfy, the situation doesn't satisfy what we should be doing there, so there shouldn't be parking there, anyway, but it is for everybody.
Any other questions? What are council's wishes, then? Moved by Counselor Verbeke, support by Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. Next report regarding Elizabeth Crescent, no-stopping zones. Mr. Botham? Oh, I need your mic on.
Yes, thanks. I'm so concerned about it, that $840,000.
Yeah, she's getting redness back in her face now. It went white there for.
Administration received complaints from residents on Elizabeth Crescent regarding vehicles parking on both sides of the street near Lutch Ave. during school hours, and it is creating traffic congestion problems due to the street being reduced to a single lane of traffic during those times. If you have a look at figure one, that's the neighbor, we did note the site, the north end of Elizabeth Crescent. It's in the neighborhood of St. Louis School. And in figure two, we just draw, drawing a little bit closer into that segment, and we are recommending not only a no parking, but rather a no-stopping zone along the south side of the road so that we can maintain two lanes of traffic through that area. There's simply, there's no parking control in the area at the moment. Cars are parking on both sides of the road, and it reduces access down to one lane. There's no place for people to pull over and take refuge and allow other cars to pass. Occasionally, we've had cars head-on in trying to figure out their situations out there. So if we do get this no-parking zone placed along the south side of Elizabeth Crescent, we will be able to maintain two lanes of traffic through that area. We are recommending that the traffic, again, that the traffic bylaw be updated per the tables that are included in the report, and that the cost of the works, in this case, is $600 for the works.
Deputy Mayor first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alan, so where are these cars going to go? Like, have you talked to the school board? Have you, to the school, perhaps? I drive by there. My mom used to live there, so I'm very familiar with that, what that looks like after school, but where are they going to pick up their children? Realize they've added that big parking lot onto their property, but that seems to be taken up with teachers and staff. So is there a place for these people to pick up their kids?
To answer your question, yes, there is. There's a fully-designed kiss-and-ride system within that property that can handle the traffic volumes. It's simply a fact of parents choosing to park outside the school property and creating these traffic issues.
Counselor Verbeke?
This is the one that got me, too. I mean, it's no parking, no stopping. To me, it's almost the same. But I just want to know, is it possible? Because if you put no parking, even on that diagram, there's a couple cars parked there with residents. Can you not put a no parking there between eight and nine and three and four? Can't we put a time limit on it so it can be used for residents and guests after? Or you still want to do something else?
That's something I didn't consider. It's, it's, in this neighborhood, it's better to have, because of the proximity to the schools, it's better to have parking on one side of the road or the other, and there is parking allowed on the north side of the road. We should maintain two lanes of traffic in an area like this. The answer is, I wouldn't recommend that at the moment, that we put a time limit on the restriction.
Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. Alan, if you could clarify this for me, please. Like, no stopping, and in your report, it says that pickup, due to school pickup or drop-off, vehicles may not be parked but stop standing driver waits in vehicle to pick up. In other words, no stopping means that if you can still sit in your vehicle and wait? Or, like, no stopping is no stopping? Because they had that situation in Windsor where they have all the, you know?
As I understand it, no parking allows for stopping. So you could do that. You can pull over and stop and wait, but no stopping means no stopping.
But in your report, it says may not be parked but stopping standing driver waits in vehicle to pick up. That's where I'm a little confused there. Is that just part of the no-stopping?
Which paragraph is that?
That's page 76, the last bullet.
So that was our, that was administration's observations, that was my staff's observations when they went out to the site. So they're simply noting that due to the fact of school pickup and drop-off activity in the area, vehicles may not be parked but simply stopping and waiting, like parked and, you know, the vehicle empty.
That would be permissible, then, sit there and wait for your?
Correct.
Okay.
So my question, then, Alan, is who enforces this? Is it our bylaw enforcement, or is the OPP? Ms. Orton?
The OPP enforces outside of our uptown area. So if there's issues, and particularly around schools, they're very good at going out and dealing with those kinds of issues. So any concerns with parking illegally in those, in these areas that are referenced in these reports would be to the OPP.
Okay, but then that leads me back to the previous report we've already said yes to, with the no parking in the Grace area. Is that enforced by OPP as well, then?
It is still, yes.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Sorry, one more question, Alan, just to make sure, because I'm not sure, and I get a phone call, I'll have to ask you anyway. So those yellow lines, no stopping, are on the south side of Elizabeth Crescent, and on that first part, on the north side. Across, across the street from that, those two, those residential places, they can park there? Their company could park there? Or no, on the north side?
Yes, they'll be allowed to park along the north side of the road, yeah.
All right, that's good. That was my only concern, was those, a couple of duplexes there, if we didn't allow for them to have visitors. Okay, that's great. Thanks so much.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Alan, will this be ready for the start of the new school year, 2017?
Yes.
And I'm just wondering, we'll probably have a lot of people that are just used to doing it, you know, parking their cars there and waiting for their kids. Would the police, at that point, would we maybe make special mention in that first week or so that they go out and point out the new rules, the signage that'll be there, instead of just getting called, fined, or whatever comes from it?
What I'd prefer to do is use the school board. We've, I've already contacted the principal and made her aware of this situation, and I believe they sent a note out with the students, notified the parents, and we could do the same thing again. We could remind the school board that this is going to be the situation when school starts. And I believe they get a mailing out or some kind of notification out before the school year starts to their students.
Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. Just going along with Counselor Wilkinson's comment, though, no stopping is no stopping, but you're making the exception, as we just went over. If you're sitting in the car, you can wait for a pickup, but the OPP officer would look at that, say, no stopping. To him, it's no stopping with no exceptions.
I don't believe I said there was an exception for parking. If the signage along a street is posted no parking, it seems to be okay to stop and sit in your car. But if it's posted no stopping, there is supposedly zero, I'll say, zero tolerance for stopping your car on the right way, or on the roadway.
But that's what you have on the south side, no stopping, all along?
Correct.
Ms. Orton?
I can just, I can, I just pulled up the traffic bylaw, so I can just indicate that stopping is defined in the bylaw, and it means the halting of a vehicle even momentarily, whether occupied or not. And then parking, just, it means, just give me one moment, and I'll just pull up that definition. It means the standing of a vehicle, whether occupied or not, except when standing temporarily for the purpose of, or actually engaged in loading or unloading. So you can stop briefly to load, unload, when parking, but stopping means if you're occupied, you just can't stop your vehicle at all.
We'll let the OPP figure it out. Moved by Counselor Dunn, support by Counselor Jacobs. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next report is one regarding the Leamington Accessibility Advisory Committee. Ms. Orton?
Thank you. As council may recall, in 2014, council received a report regarding council member appointments to boards and committees. Council approved appointments to the Leamington Accessibility Advisory Committee as follows. Counselor Hammond be appointed for a term to expire November 30, 2016, and Counselor Wilkinson be appointed for a term commencing December 1, 2016, expiring on November 30, 2018. Counselor Wilkinson has advised that he will step down as a council representative to this committee. It is therefore recommended that council appoint Counselor Hammond to the Leamington Accessibility Advisory Committee, effective immediately for a term to expire November 30, 2018.
Moved by Counselor Jacobs. Support by Counselor Wilkinson. Wow, with a thank you. All in favor of that motion? Opposed? All right, carried, again. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of the Essex Power proxy holder. Ms. Orton?
The municipality of Leamington, together with Tecumseh, LaSalle, and Amisburg, are shareholders of Essex Power Corporation. That corporation is required to hold an annual meeting of shareholders. This annual meeting is in connection with the 2016 year. There are two directors appointed to Essex Power, the mayor and Mr. Frank Ricci. They vote on behalf of the municipality at board meetings, but that does not authorize them to vote on behalf of the municipality at a shareholders' meeting. The practical way for a municipal council to cast its shareholders' vote is by proxy. It is suggested that council appoint Mayor Patterson as its proxy holder to vote on behalf of the municipality at this shareholders' meeting, and it is suggested that Mr. Ricci be appointed as an alternate proxy holder if the mayor is absent from that meeting. So the recommended action is that Mayor Patterson be appointed proxy holder for the municipality of Leamington to cast its vote at the Essex Power Corporation's 2016 shareholders' annual meeting, that Mr. Ricci be appointed as an alternate proxy holder, and that the clerk be authorized to sign and forward to Essex Power all necessary proxy forms to implement the resolution.
Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. Excuse me, with all due respect to Mr. Ricci, how is, is our alternate selected? Is it through appointment only, or is it through, how do we come up?
It is appointment. Yes, it is appointment, and Mr. Ricci has been on the board for quite some time, so, and it alternates, so that when an election occurs, if a new mayor is then appointed to the board, it's going to take at least two years to figure out what the heck's going on. So you have that lay appointee who's on for those two years with the experience, so they alternate it that way.
Okay, and the reason I ask that is simply because, with all respect to you as well, like, someone succeeds you in the next term, so Mr. Ricci would be there for two years.
Two more years, yes.
So then, what if the next mayor says, well, I want somebody else, or whatever? Like, I guess I'm going, like, it's up to council? Do they advertise for the? Okay, that's where I was going, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
That was a good question. If you recall, I think we were still in the old town hall. That was my concern as well, and then we posted for that position. No one else applied. And, yeah, I think that was prior to you being on council. So to me, no one is interested. Frank comes to the table with the skills, the background knowledge. We just need to keep going forward. It's been, we gave other people the opportunity. They didn't take it, and this serves us best. So I just wanted to say that, because, again, I had also had concerns with that.
I meant no disrespect to Mr. Ricci. I was just curious as to say, like, how are we, is it just an automatic succession thing?
No.
You're well explained, and I appreciate your comments.
Every, every four years, or whenever it comes up for renewal, it comes to council for approval.
I think this was up just within my term here, so it came before council, too.
Moved by Counselor Hammond, support by Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Carried. And the last report is one of the purchase bylaw enforcement vehicles. Ms. Orton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During the 2017 capital budget deliberations, $50,000 was approved to replace two bylaw enforcement vehicles. Tenders were released for the purchase of these two vehicles on our municipality's website. Specifications included an automatic transmission, a maximum three-liter engine, and four-wheel drive. Tenders specified small cars, SUVs, or light trucks. On May 25, two tenders were received and opened. The results are within the report. There was one bidder Airport Nissan Corp. for a 2017 Nissan Juke. The bid amount for the vehicles excluding HST was approximately $47,000. And then a second bidder for Oxford Dodge Chrysler for 2018 Jeep Compass, and that was in the amount of forty, or fifty, for approximately $54,000. The lowest bid, of course, is Airport Nissan. Administration reviewed the tender submissions, confirmed the lowest bidder met the required minimum specifications. The exteriors of both vehicles will be white, as approved by council in April of this year. Total cost of the purchase of the vehicles exclude, or including, net HST is approximately And the cost for the application of the municipality's logo to the vehicles would be funded from the remaining approximately $2,000. Given the additional staff within bylaw enforcement, the fact that our parking enforcement officer is sometimes using a vehicle throughout the day, it is anticipated that one of the two pickup trucks currently being utilized by bylaw enforcement will remain in use, and the cost of maintaining that vehicle will be monitored to ensure that these costs do not exceed the benefit of having that additional vehicle. So the recommendation is that the purchase of two 2017 Nissan Jukes in the amount of $46,990 plus HST from Airport Nissan Corp. Brampton be approved. And there's our, there's our little Nissan Juke.
Counselor Verbeke?
Where the mayor, so we're anticipating that we're going to keep the remaining of the bylaw vehicles, because I don't see any trade amounts on here.
We will be keeping one for the time being. The second one will be auctioned with the rest of our fleet in the fall. So any amount recovered from that would So any amount recovered from that would just be applied.
There's enough room in there to take signs, yard sale signs off and stuff like that?
Yes, we did look into that.
And the last one is what color?
White.
Could be just a picture, generic.
No, she said white.
I did indicate that in my report, too.
I, I, all I envision, I can see two of our guys getting in there looking like the animated movie, The Incredibles, right? Anyway. Counsel Dunn.
Through you, your worship. My question, Ruth, is regarding the minimum specifications. Is that just the four-wheel drive? Or was there other things that you were looking for in your, in the, for specs regarding the, these vehicles?
We look for just automatic transmission, simply for ease of operation. The, the three-liter engine for essentially fuel efficiency, four-wheel drive, driving in the snow and ice. And then our other just standard features that we look for in all of our vehicles. But those were the primary specifications that we were looking for.
So council's wishes? Moved by Counsel Hammond, support by Counsel Dunn. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. Matters for approval. We have the minutes of the Leamington Municipal Heritage Advisory Committee held May 24th, looking for mover and seconder. Counsel Dunn, deputy mayor. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. Other matter of consideration, there were none, no reports on closed session tonight, so we have consideration of bylaws. Ms. Horton?
Bylaw 4317 being a bylaw to amend bylaw 4284-95 as amended, being a bylaw for the regulation of traffic and parking in certain areas of the municipality, schedules B, D, and Z. Bylaw 4417 being a bylaw to amend bylaw 66806 being a bylaw to provide for the regulation and registration of dogs. That's the inclusion of the tethering provision. Bylaw 4517 being a bylaw to appoint bylaw officers for the purposes of enforcing animal welfare provisions in the municipality of Leamington. That's to appoint the Humane Society officers as bylaw enforcement officers. Bylaw 4617 being a bylaw to amend the comprehensive zoning bylaw 89009 for the municipality of Leamington, which pertains to the subject lands, ZBA 148, 429, County Road 1. Bylaw 4717 being a bylaw to provide that part lock control shall not apply to certain lands within registered plan 12M 616. Bylaw 4917 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the municipality of Leamington at its meeting held July 10th, 2017, all to be read at first, second, and third and final time.
Moved by Counsel Dunn, support by Counsel Jacobs. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. No notices of motion circulated, so we're into open session for council. Counsel Verbeke?
We're the mayor, too. One would be, I was asked by somebody, that somebody here in the administration has the key to the old railway station. I hope they can find it because it was, and this is where it just hit me, I'm sorry. I'm going to apologize then to Ruth afterwards, but it was Brian Sweet who suggested that somebody has it, because Brian had it before. So all I'm going to say is, because Ruth, I want to apologize to you because I wasn't thinking of you as a lawyer, I was thinking of somebody else that usually sits up there as a part-time. So I just, I want to apologize for that.
So Ruth, will I leave that with you to look for a key?
The key to the old train station.
Yep, over by the high school. Counsel Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. I guess this would go to Ruth as well, that we had previously discussed the amount of heavy transport traffic through the downtown area. And I noticed recently that it's been increasing. The other day I came up, I think I counted eight between when I left from Seacliff Erie to the town hall here, but I passed eight transports. Now I, it seems to me they're going to Highbury, I don't know. Can we do anything to lessen that? I mean, I don't know if they're delivering in town to Gabriel's or these other places. They need to come through, but a lot of these are going directly to Highbury and right through the downtown area. We have a sign north of town that directs them around the bypass or through trucks, but I don't know. Is there?
I don't think there's currently any bylaws that prohibit that. But I can, I'll, I'll look into it and see if, if we've ever provided any kind of, requested any assistance from Highbury or Heinz in the past to advise their drivers to look for certain other routes. But I'll certainly look into it and see what I can find.
I know that we discussed this previously, and I guess we cannot enforce it as a municipality simply because it's a highway, a provincial highway. So I don't know if there's anything we can do, but if you can do, I think a lot of individuals would appreciate it.
I think we can discuss, discuss that a little further at our strategic planning session for the Uptown Corps. Because by altering some of our traffic flow in the uptown, will absolutely discourage tractor trailers from making their way there. So it's a possibility, yeah. Counselor Hammond?
Again, your worship, thank you. I just wanted to congratulate Wendy Parsons in the chamber for the Canada Day parade. I think that it was well attended and it was nice, nice to have a summer parade, so. Kudos to Wendy and the entire chamber.
Counsel Dunn?
Through you, worship. I'm glad Counsel Hammond mentioned that because I attended the fireworks and they were spectacular. Watching them off, and there was quite a number of people down the dock as well as along the beach, so it was well packed and everybody was very impressed with it, so it was really nice to see. So kudos to everybody.
Staff? Any, nothing from staff? So real quickly for me, just to let everybody know, on Wednesday, June 28th, I was one of the three mayors that attended the swearing-in ceremony of the new 11 paramedics that we have for Essex County Medical Services. Good-looking bunch of, of guys and gals, and, and I think we're going to be well taken care of. On Saturday, July 1st, which we were just talking, or pardon me, the same day, Wednesday, June 28th, the evening, I attended the LDSS graduation ceremony, which will be the last time held at the Sherk complex, because next year they'll be holding it in their own gymnasium, auditorium at the new LD. So it was, it was a pretty good ceremony that night as well. Saturday, July 1st, a few of us, Deputy Mayor McDonald, Counselor Dunn, myself, attended along with our MP and MPP, Dave Van Kesteren and Rick Nichols, to the Leamington Menonite Home. They always have their annual barbecue luncheon, Canada Day kickoff, and extremely well attended. It was the first time I've heard Linda say that they ran out of hot dogs, pop, and water. So, or burgers, too, maybe, I can't remember, but they, they, everything was gone for the first time ever. So a lot of people attended. And the parade, again, to echo Counsel Hammond's compliments, kudos on that. And in the evening, I started off with the opening ceremonies, Mr. Newfeld, Janine, a number of us were there to bring greetings and open up the whole thing. And then the fireworks, like you say, were a great, great success. Sunday, July 2nd, we actually had time off and Betty and I went down to the Arts at the Marina. And I hope everybody at least got to peek at it one time or another, and it was, it was really, really nice, too. So always good to see that. Statement members, non-debatable. Motion to adjourn. Counsel Dunn, Counsel Hammond, all in favor? Carried. Good night.